October 17th, 2022, council meeting to order. Our first item on our agenda is a brief moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no minutes for approval, which will bring us to communications, petitions, and awards. Mr. Wendt?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. There are three items that I would like to bring to you today. The first, I would ask our newest Public Works Technician, Andy Rue, Andrew Rue, to go ahead and stand up here. Andy prepared a brief 45-minute speech for you. I'm just kidding. I told him there wouldn't be anything. So, Mr. Rue lives in Covington, but is a 2011 graduate of Van Dalia Butler High School. He's come back to us. He has, of course, a lot of construction experience, having worked as a plumber, landscaper, a laborer. Showed up with a great attitude. If I recall correctly, Mr. Rue has a thing for fishing in their house that they just got back. The other thing, too, is that if the name Andy Rue sounds familiar, it's because Public Safety Specialist Haley Rue works for us and also was the Civilian Employee of the Year in the Van Dalia Police Division. And so, there's a lot of competition here for who's going to be the best Van Dalia, City of Van Dalia employee in their house, and you probably have an uphill battle. With that being said, we'd just like to welcome you aboard. And Andy, thank you so much for coming out and do well and stay safe out there, okay? Thank you. Next, Your Honor, Item B. Treasurer McManus has come to join us today. He's provided a printout and would like to talk about some of the programs they have going on there at the county. And so, welcome back, mister. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wendt. There we go. When you're too tall, you gotta kind of mess with the podium a little bit. Make sure that... All right. Well, Vice Mayor Lewis and members of council, hello. It is an absolute pleasure to be with you today. It's great, actually, to be back. You know, my name is John McManus. I'm the Montgomery County Treasurer. And I've been in office for one year. And one thing that I've really enjoyed about my time so far is reaching out to the local cities and school districts and townships and others to form some great partnerships and just to let folks know a little bit about what we do and how we can be of assistance to both the city and your constituents. And really pleased, actually, one of the first places we came to when we were, you know, new to office and reaching out to local administration was here to Van Dalia. Mr. Wendt and Ms. Holloway were kind enough to make time to sit down with us, and that was really appreciated, and we had a blast. And so, it's great to be back. And I'll have to tell Mayor Herbst that I was in his city hall without him. I actually saw him down in the county building this week. So, I hope he's doing well as well. But it is a real pleasure to be with you. I'd also like to introduce Missy May Walters with our office. She does a great job. She is in charge of all of the external relations and communications for the Treasurer's Office. Does a wonderful, wonderful job. So, one of the... And so, you should have gotten some materials in advance of the meeting and then, as well as, I brought a handout with me this evening. And I'm here, first of all, just to say hello to those of you that I've never met, but also to tell you a little bit about how I can be of assistance to your residents, to your property owners... Oh, hey, there's one of them. To your homeowners and also to the city, if you so choose. So, first, and I'm sure everybody knows, but what in the world does the county treasurer do? The county treasurer is the county's chief tax collector, those being property taxes and assessments, as well as the county treasurer serves as the county's banker and investment officer. And each of those has an impact, and so, I'm really happy to tell you a little bit about them. So, to tell you a little bit about how I can help your constituents, those who own property in Van Dalia, I brought just a couple things. So, you know, one of the things that I'm always very cognizant of is, how can we make it easy, easiest, easier for folks to pay their property taxes and meet their financial obligations? And, of course, nobody likes paying property taxes, but it's their responsibility. And so, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure it's as easy as possible. So, one of the things I wanted to bring to you is an option that is really, really popular here in Montgomery County, and that is our prepayment option. And so, you'll see on the screen before you, this sheet here. Forgive our humble county printer. It's a little blurry, but these things happen. We've also digitized this form on our website. But this option allows property owners here in Montgomery County not just to pay their property taxes in one payment or two, but to break up those payments into 12-month installments. And that's really helpful. I think, you know, I think everything, everyone's cognizant of the fact that property taxes can be a big financial burden on families and property owners. And I oftentimes run into folks who say, hey, do you have an option out there where we can split it up into installments? And the answer is yes. So, one thing I would encourage you to do if you are speaking with a constituent or a business or a property owner who wants it to make it a little easier to pay their property taxes, we have this monthly installment program. Not just where they send in, you know, 12 checks a year, but we have electronic funds withdrawals, things of that nature. On the next page here, this is an example, and this is a really important one. You know, when I came into office, there was quite a substantial amount of tax delinquent properties in the county. Of course, we were... I was elected in 2020 and then took office in '21. And so, we were obviously coming out of a pretty hard economic time. And so, the sheer number of tax delinquent parcels in the county was a big deal. So, we've worked very, very hard this year. We've collected over $40 million in delinquent taxes this year alone, which was not easy, but which is really important for not just homeowners and property owners, but also for cities and school districts to bring these properties off of the delinquency rolls and onto the ordinary tax rolls. So, this is an example of one type of payment contract that we offer people. This right there, thank you. This is actually a delinquent payment contract. And I wanted to bring this one to you tonight as well because if you know of someone who may be struggling to meet their financial obligations, if they are behind in property taxes, we always want to make sure that folks know that there are options available to them that, you know, that are available to them before the end of the road. And that's really important. So, if somebody out there maybe has never been on a payment plan with the Treasurer's Office, you know, if they're a tax delinquent, we can put them on a payment plan in order to help them get current and back on track on their financial obligations. Obviously, you know, the end of the road, unfortunately, usually comes in the form of a tax foreclosure or a tax lien being sold on someone's property. And we hate to see that. So, we always make sure to tell folks, you know, hey, if you haven't been on a delinquency contract with the Treasurer's Office, with the county before, we have options available to you. And that's really important. Because I think it's, you know, as we all know, and this is occurring nationally, and you're really seeing the trend, you know, across the country. But for quite some time, especially during COVID, there were a lot of foreclosure moratoriums and eviction moratoriums and everything else. You know, as those moratoriums start to end, then, you know, there are a lot of enforcement actions that are happening out there across the country. And so, you know, I, as Treasurer, I'm the plaintiff in all tax foreclosures. So, I always make sure, yep, you know, while I have to do that, while it's part of the job, I view it as part of my job, too, to let folks know about what tools are available for them. And as we'll see in previous or in upcoming slides, Van Dalia has done an incredible job. And your property owners and your business owners are really to be commended because they have done and continue to do an excellent job in meeting their financial obligations. So, that's great. One other program I wanted to share with you, and this is something that is more popular in Dayton, Trotwood, Harrison Township, Jefferson Township. Just because the sheer number of tax delinquent or abandoned or neglected properties are there, obviously, you don't have a lot up here, which is a real blessing. But, you know, especially when there's a real estate boom, everybody kind of wants to be a property investor. I'm sure you've heard of a lot of people wanting to pick up investment properties. And I am constantly asked, you know, hey, are there programs through Montgomery County that allow residents to bid for, apply for, go after tax delinquent properties? And the answer is yes. You see programs like this in some of the larger counties here in the state. You don't see them in the smaller counties. But if you have a constituent who's interested in investing in property somewhere in Montgomery County, and they are into flipping houses or something like that, or maybe they're looking for a house for themselves, the Treasurer's Office has a program, and you'll see this in front of you, called the Depositor Foreclosure Program. This is a program that is 100% administered by the Treasurer's Office. This allows individuals, as long as they themselves are not tax delinquent, to come into the Treasurer's Office with a deposit, $2,000 for residential, $3,000 for commercial or industrial, and allow that depositor to put down that deposit against a tax delinquent property anywhere in the county. And then, at that point, the Treasurer's Office does some due diligence. And assuming that the property, of course, is confirmed as eligible, that property is then pushed into a judicial foreclosure. So, I always tell people, it is a court case. It can take sometimes a year. But this is, you know, this is a program that has become increasingly popular over the past year, two years here in Montgomery County. Because as we all know, in counties all across the state of Ohio, especially when compared with other states, Ohio has a lot of abandoned properties or neglected properties. And so, there are folks out there who are interested in investing in these properties and fixing them up, maybe selling them, or looking for a property for themselves. So, if you have a constituent who is interested in that kind of thing, please know that we have a program available at the Treasurer's Office. Ways that the Treasurer's Office can be of assistance to cities. Couple things, and that will end it on the slides. And whoever's working the slides, thank you. Is that you? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wendt. Thank you, sir. And so, how can the Treasurer's Office help cities, local municipalities? Actually, where we're standing right now here in Van Dalia has, this part of the county has a unique history with the county and with the Treasurer's Office, with public financing. So, about 10 years ago, Butler Township entered into two public financing options, if you will, to fund several public works. And the Treasurer's Office, you know, in my role as the county's investment officer, we have a fund of about $860 million that we invest in order to earn a return to then, you know, offset any general fund expenditures where appropriate. And that fund can, in certain circumstances, be used to help local governments with various financing. And so, Butler Township, about 10 years ago, took out two of these public financing arrangements, a couple million dollars, and it really allowed them to move forward on various public works projects. So, and you may have, you know, you may have heard about that in the past. So, one thing I encourage is, you know, if Van Dalia is ever, you know, out there on the market looking to borrow money to fund various projects, please know that there is another option available. And we always encourage you to reach out to us if that's something you want to discuss. Oftentimes, and you're really seeing this a lot across the state of Ohio, where, and it's going to be important as these interest rates continue to climb, where local governments are approaching their county's Treasurers about just this type of thing. And what's nice about it, too, is the Treasurer's Office can offer really attractive terms, you know, delayed payments, things like that. So, it's really attractive for local governments. In addition to that, and again, Van Dalia is very blessed. You really don't have, you know, a lot of abandoned or neglected properties here. But one thing that is unique to Treasurers across the state of Ohio is something called an expedited foreclosure. So, as you look at your real estate portfolio across the city, and if you ever come across a property that you think is abandoned or neglected, something like that, the Treasurer's Office has the ability to work with cities to push up an abandoned property through something called an expedited foreclosure. It's an administrative foreclosure. And then, at the conclusion of that process, the property is then reverted back to the filer, i.e. the city. And that really helps with economic development in certain communities across the state. You know, again, you really don't have much of that up here. You have a really, really robust real estate portfolio up here in Van Dalia, and you're very fortunate. So, but if that ever becomes an issue in the future and you see a property that you think may be abandoned, please feel free to reach out to us, and we can offer solutions. Finally, one of the things I just wanted to bring to you, and you can see just how well Van Dalia is doing, is just some information on what we see on our end relative to properties in your real estate portfolio, including the total taxes billed in Van Dalia, the number of parcels broken down by type. And as we mentioned, there's not a whole lot of tax delinquent properties in Van Dalia, but there are some. And so, one thing, again, I always encourage you to do is, if you know somebody who may be one of these properties, if you know somebody who owns one of these properties, please always feel free to reach out to me directly. And I will leave all my cards here, so you have my direct line. And we can see if we can help get that property owner back on track through a payment plan or something of that nature and to where we can provide assistance. So, we are always happy to do that. If you ever want to see a list of tax delinquent properties in your jurisdiction, we have that available, and we can walk through with your staff. We get that question sometime from cities, you know, are there properties in our jurisdiction that may be delinquent, where we can work with the property owners to try and get them back on track? Yes, yeah, we can provide that information. Finally, one of the things that we love doing at the Treasurer's Office, and I do it personally, and Missy always comes with me, is we do financial literacy projects all across the community. I mean, we are at, you know, childcare centers. We go to, actually, we do reentry for folks coming out of Jalen Prison. We go to community centers, nursing homes. We go all over the place to provide, you know, financial education to not just adults, but also children and families. So, if you ever have something in your community where you feel that may be interesting, entertaining, valued, please let us know, and we're happy to come out and do a little financial literacy program for children, families, anybody who may enjoy it. With that, I will conclude, and I will say how much I deeply appreciate you making the time for us tonight. We are incredibly honored to serve Van Dalia. We're incredibly honored to work with each of you. We're incredibly honored to represent your constituents and your property owners and everybody who lives in Van Dalia. So, thank you. It's a true privilege. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer if you do. If not, any of you are always welcome up at the county building. We're on the second floor. We're happy to host you and show you our operation and answer any more questions in depth you may have. Thank you to each of you, and you've got some great administration here working for you hard, and so, they do a great job. Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you very much, Treasurer McManus. Next, if it pleases the Chair, I would invite Ms. Kathy Peterson from the Citizens for Sinclair to speak about the upcoming renewal levy. And of course, Ms. Peterson is a Butler Township resident and a Van Dalia Butler grad as well, right?
I sure am. Very proud to be here, and I'm so grateful for the time that you have given me tonight to talk about Sinclair Community College, its impact on the city of Van Dalia and its residents, and the upcoming levy that we have on the ballot in November. It is Issue 10. Sinclair Community College is celebrating 136 years this year. And our mission has remained the same since day one. It is find the need and endeavor to meet it. It was established by our founder, David A. Sinclair. And I wanted to bring some data about Sinclair's impact on the city of Van Dalia in fiscal year 2022. We had 354 Van Dalia residents attend Sinclair. 67 degrees and certificates awarded to Van Dalia residents. We had more than 4,700 college credits earned by City of Van Dalia residents in fiscal year '22. We had 70 high school students through our College Credit Plus program that were enrolled at Sinclair. Annual tuition costs saved by Van Dalia residents, $1.5 million. And then, we offered $1.1 million, or we awarded $1.1 million in aid to Van Dalia residents. So, we're very proud of that. I just have a couple of slides, you know, with students and the impact that Sinclair Community College has. It's not only about providing that affordable, high-quality education, but it's giving them the opportunity to find the services that they need, whether it's a food pantry, you know, that need went up a lot during the pandemic. You can see here Sinclair Community College, especially for Montgomery County residents, is one of the lowest in the state. Also, our Sinclair out-of-county tuition, also one of the lowest in the state when you compare that to public universities. And you can see the value of Sinclair Community College and the earnings increase from $22,000 to $38,000 in the first year after graduation with an associate degree from Sinclair Community College. We have three, more than 300 degree and certificate programs offered at Sinclair. 99% of our graduates rate the quality of the education that they receive as good or excellent. And then, 90% of Sinclair graduates stay in this region and support our local economy. You can see the number of degrees and certificates over the last 10 years has increased significantly. Last year, we awarded more than 11,000 degrees and certificates. Same with our numbers of degrees and certificates to minority students. And then, the next slide, to African-American students. We've seen almost a 500% increase over the last 10 years. You can see some of the professions, whether it's healthcare, first responders, technical, or business. These are the numbers of degrees and certificates that we have awarded over the past five years. I'm proud to say that Butler High School is one of our high school partners, either through College Credit Plus or Tech Prep. And you can see that we have 139 signed agreements with school districts across the region. We also have registered apprenticeship programs, which are learn while you earn models that offer on-the-job training and as well as educational opportunities. And you can see some of the employers that we work with throughout the region. Sinclair currently has 65 active apprentices. And then, I'm going to talk a little bit about Issue 10, which I mentioned earlier. That is our levy that is on the ballot in November. I'll talk a little bit about our fiscal responsibility. You know, we still have one of the lowest tuition rates in the state, as I mentioned. But our fiscal responsibility routinely have spotless financial audits and achieve the highest financial rating from the state of Ohio. And here's a big one. Sinclair Community College has zero debt. I'll show you a breakdown of our operating budget. You can see there's a sliver in there that's purple. That is our Levy B revenue. Levy B generates $9 million annually, and that goes to support workforce programs and to keep the tuition down for Montgomery County residents. And then, Issue 10 at a glance, Levy B, which I just mentioned, that expires in 2023. That is why we are on the ballot, November 8th. Sinclair has two levies for 56 years. Montgomery County voters have entrusted Sinclair with levy dollars. Our levy has passed every time. It has gone before Montgomery County voters. Issue 10, you'll see it on the ballot on November 8th. This is a renewal. This is probably the most important thing. There is no tax increase. It is a renewal for Levy B. So, Issue 10 is a one-mill renewal. And again, it generates $9 million. We can keep education, services, and programming high-quality and affordable in Montgomery County. The annual cost of Issue 10, it is less than $35 a year to a property owner in Montgomery County with a $100,000 property. And again, will not increase taxes. I can't say that enough, right? And it'll be less than $3 per month if you vote in favor. This is our Citizens for Sinclair campaign. These are our co-chairs, representatives from different industries throughout Montgomery County. And these are some of the endorsements that we've received from both the Democratic and Republican Parties here in Montgomery County, the League of Women Voters, Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce, and several others. And this is what we call the picture of the big room. This is what levy dollars allow us to do. This is the University of Dayton Arena. It is the only facility big enough to let us have graduation there for all of our graduates. So, the levy helps us do that. You'll probably see some signs around, won't raise taxes. And that is all that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing. There's no public hearing tonight. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens. If any member of the audience would like to speak, please state your name and address for the record and provide any comments that you might have. Anybody? Seeing none, that'll bring us to the City Managers' Report. Mr. Wendt?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Just a few items. First off, I'd like to say congratulations to Aaron Messenger and Director Clark and the rest of the Park and Rec staff on a great Fall Fest, as well as the Van Dalia Arts Council. It was a very well-attended and great event. Also, the Treasurer was there and Missy May as well. And so, we appreciated them setting up. The, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago, I guess, at August 15th, the council meeting, Mr. David Todd issued some comments regarding the Northwoods Boulevard Kroker, specifically relating to vehicles, commercial vehicles parking in the fire lane and blocking crosswalks. Staff worked with the property managers to resolve the issue. No parking signs have been installed in the lot, and the asphalt has been painted to clearly mark the fire lane. So, I believe that issue is resolved, and we've reached out and communicated that with him. Next, leaf collection is definitely underway. That began on October 10th. We like to pick up as much as we can before we're swimming in it. We have a map and also a street-by-street list will come through several times, advising residents that leaves must be raked into the street. Any leaves on the grass behind the curb will not be picked up. In areas without curbs, leaves must be placed immediately along the edge of the pavement. And crews will not collect leaves piled more than a foot away from the edge of the roadway. This is because of the type of equipment that we have. And we, of course, have that on the website. And so, if you just search Van Dalia, Ohio, leaf pickup, that'll take you right there. That concludes my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. There are no action items this evening, nor is there any old business. Which brings us to resolutions. Mr. McDonald, Resolution 22R70.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of an asphalt hot box and recycler by the Public Works Department from the McLean Company at the Sourcewell Cooperative bidding contract price in the amount of $45,348.
Mr. Wendt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that this will make Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Heslett... I know that this will make Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Heslett, who are here, very excited. I'm requesting authorization to purchase an asphalt hot box and recycler for use in the Public Works Division. This piece of equipment will be more efficient and reduce costs in our roadway patching. Currently, anytime we need to fill potholes or make patches in our roadways during the winter months, we use a cold patch material that is very costly and only makes a temporary repair until spring, when the asphalt plants open. This piece of equipment instead would allow us to make permanent repairs to potholes and utility repairs all year long. I anticipate being able to have this for winter and patchwork if we are able to order this soon. The hot box will keep materials hot and allow us to recycle and reuse asphalt grindings for repairs. There are current unexpended funds in the street, storm sewer, water and sanitary funds from projects and purchases that were under budgeted amount this year. Therefore, I recommend that council grant authorization for the purchase of the asphalt hot box and recycler from the McLean Company at a contract price of $45,348.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution 22R-70 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers. Are there any comments? Mr. McDonald, do you read the roll?
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to resolution 22R-71. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing cooperation and contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding ODOT Project MODIR 75, 22.92 PID number 117515.
Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This project is the direct result of feedback from a business in the Northwoods area, and so the city and the Ohio Department of Transportation have agreed to partner on the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Northwoods Boulevard and the I-75 southbound ramps. We partnered on a similar project previously. For this project, the city will be responsible for approximately 26% of the estimated costs, including engineering. The Ohio Jobs and Commerce Department is contributing $80,000 towards this project, and the schedule that I have uploaded shows a build-out time with the project being completed Halloween of next year.
Super.
Spooky.
May I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve resolution 22-R-71 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee. Are there any comments from council? Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to resolution 22R-72. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution establishing a summer meeting schedule for the months of June, July and August 2023.
Thank you, Your Honor. The resolution proposes that during the months of June, July and August, City Council would meet once per month. On the third Monday of each month, council's workshop would begin at 6:00 PM with the council meeting at 7:00 PM. The official dates for 2023 would be June 19th, July 17th and August 21st.
Very well. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve resolution 22-R-72.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Fars for approval of resolution 22R-72. Mr. McDonald, oh, are there any comments? Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to resolution 22R-73. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving competitive bidding to purchase three patrol vehicles requested by the Division of Police from statewide Ford Lincoln in the amount of $148,446 and rescinding resolution 22R-04.
Very well. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. We previously reported had the police division come here. Ford Motor Company, that's not Bow Townsend Ford, canceled the VPD's order for three 2022 Ford utility patrol vehicles. We're requesting that City Council waive competitive bidding and authorize me, the City Manager, to purchase three 2023 Ford utility police patrol vehicles from statewide Ford Lincoln and Van Wirt at the price of $49,482 per unit for a total cost of $148,446. Mr. Larry Taylor and the team at Bow Townsend worked very extensively with their contacts at the Commercial Fleet Divisions for Ford Motor Company to reestablish the order. This was not possible because the factory lines have already been converted for production of the 2023 model. Further complicating matters, the order window for the 2023 model has already closed. Chief Al House indicates that there was an extremely limited supply of those 2023 models, and VPD budgeted $139,000 for the three patrol vehicles. In the future, I would propose a supplemental to offset the difference of the $9,500 to cover the increased cost. It's likely there will be no state bid, or what my notes say, for patrol vehicles in 2023 due to vehicle manufacturers having filled most or all of their 2023 model orders. Of course, earlier today, Lieutenant Suker contacted me and stated that there appeared to be some sort of information that came out about a potential bid. There doesn't seem to be clear information or a state bid opportunity about the actual packages or the vehicles that will actually be available. And so because of that, because of the timing and the wear and tear on our fleet, and knowing that there will already be a delay, I'm requesting that we move forward with resolution 22R-73.
Because of the issue with manufacturer, we might want to consider ordering the next replacement vehicles.
Well, that is, that is very astute of you, Vice Mayor. This year, we have, you'll recall, it was going to be a gap year in 2023. So what we've done is, instead of taking that gap year, we've appropriated funds for cruisers in 2023 so that we can order 2024's vehicles ahead, and so the economy's changing a little bit. I do think that this strain and what it's putting on public safety may result in some recommended changes within our procurement process as well in response to this, to make us a little bit more lean and mean in acquiring such vehicles, of course, complying with all the laws that are, that we're subject to.
Very well, thank you. May I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve resolution 22-R-73 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee. Are there any comments by council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald, we call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. We have no ordinances of first reading, and we have no ordinances, we have one ordinance in the second reading. Mr. McDonald, ordinance 2235.
An ordinance amending Vandelia Codified Ordinances, Section 104211, 104406D and 104528 regarding, regarding water sewer wastewater treatment and storm water drainage rates.
Since this is an ordinance in the second reading, we have a public hearing. This is an open public hearing. For anyone in the audience who would like to address council on this legislation, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please let us know your Seeing none, I will ask for a motion on 2235.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve ordinance number 22-35 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Fars. Are there any comments of council?
Just briefly, I mean, this is probably something that, over the past two or three months, I know that we've, we've had a couple of different proposals on, on the rate increase. City staff, well, I can say, from before my time on council, I was attending budget hearings and, and city council meetings and heard both the Finance Director and the previous city manager report for several times that we needed to address water and sewer rates. And then, you know, Mr. Went comes on board a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, and it was one of the projects that he was tasked with. And I don't think anyone enjoys raising rates, but I think staff has presented a very appropriate response to what I personally think has been years of neglect or, or not keeping up with the inflation, inflationary costs of the water and sewer utilities. So staff has given us a presentation or given us a plan to get both our water and sewer and storm water funds back into a position where we have fund balances that we can start to reinvest in infrastructure needs that are facing our city while maintaining safe waters and sewer services for our residents. So even though it's not something that I don't, I don't think any of us enjoy doing, it's necessary and it's appropriate to make the change and get, get us back to where we can start reinvesting tax dollars into the infrastructure needs for both our water and sewer utilities. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Well put. Anyone else? Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an emergency ordinance, 22-40. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to storm water fees, trash collection, delinquents, sewer and water and weed cutting.
Very well. May I have a motion?
We have a public hearing.
Oh, pardon me. We do have a public hearing. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open the public hearing for, for the ordinance. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council on this legislation, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and any comments you may have for the council. Seeing none, I will now call for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 2240 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Fars for approval of the 2240 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Seeing none? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Reports from boards and commissions?
Six.
And we, the variance at 3345?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's, it's on. It was crossed out on my.
Yes, sir, this should be on.
Very good. Mr. McDonald?
I will defer to Mr. Went, if you don't mind.
Thank you. If that's okay, sir.
Please do so.
3345 Stop Eight Road, the applicant Stop Eight Vandelia has requested a variance to allow outdoor storage at 118%. The principal building's footprint at the property located at 3345 Stop Eight Road, the proposed outdoor storage would occur on an exposed 112,807 square-foot building foundation. The code permits outdoor storage areas at no larger than 25% of the principal building's footprint. We've approved several that look like these pretty recently. At its meeting on September 28th, 28th, 2022, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval with the following condition. One, that storage will occur just on the foundation, and I'm showing you that foundation in this picture.
Anything further?
No, Your Honor.
Very good. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance for 3345 Stop Eight Road with the condition of storage will occur just on the foundation.
Second.
Second. A motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Folick to approve the variance at 3345 Stop Eight Road. Are there any comments of council? Seeing none, Mr. McDonald?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Next are the minutes of the Civil Services Commission meeting from September 30th and the Planning Commission meetings from September, September the 27th. Are there any comments on these minutes? Seeing none, that brings us to the September bill listing expenses and the September purchasing card details. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, up here are the September 22 bill listings and expenses over $50,000. And also the purchasing card detail, which was included in the packet.
Very well. Any, are there any comments? Seeing none, that will bring us to council comments, and we'll go in order. Councilman Woods?
Nothing this evening.
Councilman Blakeslee?
To excuse Mr. Herp, or Mayor Herbst from all meetings tonight?
Very well, I have a motion?
Second.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None? Motion passes seven to zero to excuse Mayor Herbst from all meetings this evening.
And then lastly, great success for the Fall Festival. It was very nice. Kudos to all city staff and Arts Council.
Very good. Mr. Folick?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Very well. Mr. Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Very well. Councilman Woods?
Wrong.
You look like Fars.
I want to say thank you to Aaron Messenger. He did a great job at Fall Festival, and I know other staff helped him, but he is the impetus to. Um. impetus to, he has a very creative and great work ethic. He puts a lot of effort into everything, so thank you. And thank you to staff. We had our first budget meeting last week. We have another one tomorrow night. Those are difficult for staff. They put a lot of work into that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. McDonald, would you have any comments?
I do not, thank you very much.
Mr. Went?
Your Honor, just a few short, short, I promise so, short comments. Congratulations to John Myers, our recreation coordinator, and Matt Roberts, our parks maintenance technicians on their negative four score for our employee golf scramble. As a condition of the employee golf scramble, I have to say, they are the champions, and so I've read that into the minutes in council. Also, I'm just so happy to report to you that Mrs. Went is expecting a baby on November first, and so I will be in and out of the office around that time, and it could happen anytime, so everyone's healthy and happy, but we're just excited to bring a little baby home to Vandelia.
Wonderful. And I have no comments this evening, and our meeting will stand adjourned.